Looking at future items, next Wednesday on October 26th, we will have, actually, we have a guest this evening and we're, we have a guest next week as well. Dr. Pollard from Montgomery College, the president of Montgomery College, will be here. As a reminder to my colleagues, we'll do the same thing that we did this evening and have a light dinner at 6:30 before our meeting at 7:30. We have a voting session with many tentative items on it. A single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of wireless microphone system for the auditorium. A single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of door security hardware and ID software. A single reading ordinance for the purchase of an installation of a truck engine for Public Works. A single reading ordinance for the purchase of a replacement truck for Public Works. And the first reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of two replacement trucks for Public Works. In addition, next week, we will have a work session, an update on our police community relations. And then on Wednesday, November 2nd, our voting session will be a first reading ordinance amending our code related to parking meter zones and a single reading ordinance awarding the FY 2017 community grants. Tentatively scheduled on our voting session is a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Xerox State and Local Solutions for the photo speed enforcement program. And then, don't forget, November 8th is Election Day. Please don't forget to vote. And then on November 9th, we have, November 9th is Finance Night. We have a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, a presentation of the Police Pension Plan, and discussion of options for bonding. And then on Wednesday, November 16th, we will have a voting item on a single reading ordinance amending our code, our, second reading, sorry, a second reading ordinance amending our code related to the parking meter zones, and a work session regarding proposals to request letters of interest regarding the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. And then we are into Thanksgiving. Yes, it is. So this evening, we have a number of voting items and we'll take public comment on those first. The first voting item is a resolution providing direction on the conversion to LED street lighting. If there are any public comments on that, please make them at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, council members and staff. My name's Mark Sherman, I live on Hancock Avenue in Ward 3, and I spoke about this issue to you on September 21st when you took a straw vote. I'm back today to ask that you grant the Safe Roadways Advisory Committee, of which I'm a member, 30 days to contribute to this discussion by giving the council a report on items that were not included in the staff report of September 21st. That report, as you may remember, talked about the costs of conversion and who was going to be responsible for maintaining the lights and so on. But it did not address the downsides of LEDs, the health, the impact on human health, the impact on light pollution, and it did not address the experience of other municipalities, which discovered after putting in the lights that they weren't the great thing they thought they would be and had to make changes. I first corresponded with Department of Public Works about this one year ago. And in an email dated October 26th sent to me and Ms. Stewart when she was still on the council, the Public Works directors declined to meet with me, saying that she wanted to wait until projects were pending. I would say this is that moment. And I would encourage you to consider the role of advisory committees of the kind that I'm on. I applied a couple of years ago, I waited a year and a half to get on, and I finally was so glad to be part of the process, thought I would be included and involved and no longer just an outsider casting potshots as an individual. I'd be a member of the process in my own city. And so I'm hoping that these advisory committees are not mere onlookers, that we actually have a role and that we actually have an opportunity to contribute. And so I hope you would look at the requests sent by the chair of that committee, Joe Edgell, for 30 days to give you a full report on the items that were not brought to your attention the first time around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on this voting item? Our second voting item tonight is a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for construction of a bump out in concrete pad to accommodate a bike share statement, uh, station, excuse me. Any comments on that? Our next voting item is a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase and installation of two bike share stations. Any public comments on that one? All right, and then we have a resolution providing for the appointments to the Noise Control Board. Any public comments regarding that? All right, and then we will move on to general public comments. If anyone has any public comments this evening. Mr. Lovis will get you the microphone in a moment. Any other public comments this evening? Go ahead, Mary Jane, Ms. Machuie. It's okay.
Hi, everybody, good evening. I was hoping they would postpone this meeting because of the presidential debates tonight, but I'm going to sneak home early, plus I'm recovering from bonkitis, so apologize for the cough. I'm here, really, what we need more than anything in this whole place, I think, is affordable housing. And I'm glad there's a step in the right direction, but it all ties in. Affordable housing, the most people at risk are people like me, on parents or special needs adults. We need, my son and people like him need it more than anybody else, is affordable housing. My ex-husband, who was born in Kenya and was shot in the head and left for dead quite a few years ago, still has to be on the HOC waiting list. He's been on the waiting list for a year and a half. Why? I mean, it's really, really sad. I mean, he has severe neurological damage and he's still on the waiting list. It's, it's a travesty and we all pride ourselves in being such great people and helping people all around the world and letting, letting be a sanctuary city, but what about the people already here? It's like, please, and to, please stop also all these McMansions and gentrification projects. It really, really bothers me because my property taxes go up and up. And thank you, Tim, for voting against the property tax increase. I appreciate that. I wish that all of you would vote against it, at least for people like me who are living on, like, around $25,000 a year. I mean, come on. I mean, even the people, the owners, it's not just apartment dwellers who are poor, some of us homeowners. I bought our house for $69,000 30 years ago, me and my ex. You know, I could get $350 for it now, but I don't want it. I want to stay here, damn it. I'm stubborn as hell and I'm going to want to stay here with my son. And I, and I, my son has no where's to go. He's autistic, he can't live by himself, he, he needs it. And I would like to turn it into a place where other people with autism or developmental psychiatric illness can live too. But I don't have the money, but I'm going to try to get the money so I could pump it up, okay? And thank you very much, and you all have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Mr. Lovis, go ahead.
Hello, everybody out there. This is Pat Lovis, your official peace delegate. I want to remind you people out there, it's T-minus and 20 days to countdown for Election Day. We've only got 20 days left to get, to make up our mind who we want to vote for. And for God's sakes, that the ones who I don't want to vote, they can change their minds. They still got 20 days to do it. If you're a registered voter, you can do it. I want to see people out there voting. I'll be down there at the Tacoma Park Middle School, down there with the big peace sign. I am every year, and every time there's an election, you always see me out there with the peace sign. Sometimes at other events too. But I'd like to see us vote responsibly this year because this is a strange election. And by the way, yes, tonight, the debates are on. And they're to help you decide who do you want to have run this country, A, number A or number B. And I think you guys should listen to who you want to have running this country. Who do you want to have your life in your, in their hands? Because your life will be literally in their hands if we ever go to war. You know, I don't know which one will push the nuclear button. I know, I know, I know one of them might, but I don't know about another one. Or the, or the other one, the third candidate. But I think we should definitely vote this year. Be responsible for your, for your ways. Be sure and tell your kids, "I voted." You want to, if your kids are above 18 and registered, take them down to vote. And be sure to tell all your friends you talk to on the telephone or the internet. Tell them, register to vote. If you're not registered, I don't know if it's too late or not. But I want to see you people out there voting. I want to see a record turnout in Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County. Because this is not only heard just in Tacoma Park, it's heard all over the county. So everybody out there, get out there and vote this year. It's a very, very important election. All elections are important. Your tax money depends on it. Do your taxes up or down? Do you want to have your more money go into nuclear weapons or you want to have it go to farms? Do you want to have it go to social programs or do you want to have it going out to war? Make up your mind, vote for peace and vote responsibly. You can do it, I know you can. You are adults now, I notice. You graduated from high school, you must have learned the importance of voting. It's more important now than it was back then. Your lives depend on it. So get up there and vote like your ass depends on it, my friend said, because it does. It really does this time, so please. Tell your friends, tell all your friends. Put the ballgame up for a while, put up the TV for a while and come down and register to vote. And get out there and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Lovis. Have a good evening.
Yep, love it, love it, love it.
Any other comments this evening? All right, then we'll move on to council comments. Any colleagues have any comments this evening? Councilmember Schultz?
Two things that I want to comment on tonight. One is just a, an announcement that the Hillwood Manor Community is scheduled to have a community meeting this coming Monday, October 24th, at the Rec Center from 7:00 PM to 8:30. And they're hoping to have a representative of the police department there, plus discuss other, other issues. Just want people to be aware that that meeting's coming along. If you live in that neighborhood or nearby, you're going to want to attend it. The other comment I'd like to make is that-
Mr. Barkley, I'm sorry, councilman, I see you, sorry. If you want to make a call, a comment, after, after councilmember-
About voting, things you're going to vote on.
Yes, we did have that. But if you'd like to sit down as soon as councilmember Schultz done, I'll let you have your chance. Thank you, Mr. Barkley. Sorry, councilmember Schultz.
Oh, okay, sure. That's fine. One of the things, as many, many residents know, is we've been focusing more and more our attention to the area in the crossroads where we have a lot, one of the largest business areas and actually the largest business area in our city, trying to figure out how we can coordinate the work, the development between the two counties because the county line runs right down the middle of University Boulevard, which is going to be the, the track of the future Purple Line. And we're trying to figure out how to help the business community up there and the neighborhoods around it to cope and react to the coming of the Purple Line. And in that vein, I had a chance to have lunch today with a person I'd never met before, who's a pretty important person in the Prince George's area. He's Carlos Sanchez, who was, been serving for a little over one year representing I guess, what do you call it? Session, Section 41B, as the sole delegate for this area. And his, for Prince George's County, it's an area that abuts Tacoma Park, but goes all the way over, includes Prince George's Plaza over to Adelphi Road and that whole area up to University Boulevard. And he's the sole representative in Annapolis for that area. He spent most of his life going to school and living in the Tacoma Park area. And he lives just across the line, within about two blocks of Tacoma Park. And he works at Montgomery College and he's a Salvadorian. And he's a fascinating guy, but the point of my, our conversation was to talk about how he wants to help advance the efforts that we're trying to make in the crossroads area to help coordinate those, those efforts from his position as a delegate in Annapolis. And so we had a long, two-hour conversation over lunch to talk about how we can coordinate our work with other, our D-20 delegates as well as members of the, the city council and other interested parties to help plan for the future and, and pull together the, the interests of the businesses and the neighborhoods that's, that surround the crossroads area. And I was very, really delighted about his enthusiasm and his ideas and what he's trying to do. So we're making small steps. This is an area where, you know, just, we're talking about economic development here, one of the most dynamic areas in the Washington suburbs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barkley, if you'd like to speak now?
Thank you very much. I'm a little late because I was recovering from being nearly gassed in the library bathroom. I don't know who thought this up, but there is this device in there now that sprays out this scent, and I use air quotes, because it's an obnoxious substance, whatever it is, and it takes my breath away, literally. So I'm sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late. It's still in my throat. What I wanted to advise the council about was this whole business of LED. Now that Pepco has been taken over by Epsilon, we're dealing with a very large corporation. And I read what councilmember Kovar put on our listserv, and I've also read the various articles that I've seen in the Washington Post and Science News and a number of other places about the internet. I, for one, as somebody who takes to heart daily what Ralph Waldo Emerson said, which is that the sky is the daily bread of the eyes. And he didn't mean just daytime, he meant nighttime. Having grown up in Tacoma Park and remember Dr. Floran, who was my neighbor across the street, taking us out in the street back when we had incandescent lights for our streetlights. And you could see the Milky Way on a new moon. You can forget seeing the Milky Way in Tacoma Park anymore. And I find that to be a tragedy for a lot of younger people. I found that to be really enlightening, to be able to see that our galaxy existed out there, to actually see it on a good night. I think it's a connection that a lot of children are losing, you know. They're lucky if they can see a star or two or the moon, even though right now the moon's as close as it's going to be. So I would encourage the council to install a few of these LED lights, accept the fact that you're dealing with a very large corporation and they have almost all the cards. So this idea of us going away from Pepco is, I think, tilting a windmill's when you get right down to it. And we need to deal with reality, make a deal with Pepco, and go for the lower temperature lights, not this 4K or better. You know, there's new emerging research that the blue light that it puts out is very harmful for not only human beings, but for wildlife. And I, for one, I'm all for saving money. I have a Scottish grandfather, so I know all about saving money. But I don't want to do it at the risk of my eyes and disturbing the wildlife and, you know, just producing other bigger problems. Thank you very much and thank you for the indulgence. You all have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley. All right, we'll go back to council comments. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday night, I was at a meeting that was organized by some residents in North Tacoma. There were over 30 residents there and it was to focus on what appears to be a significant increase in the incidence of break-ins that has taken place in that area. And these things tend to be cyclical. About a year ago, it seemed as if a lot of that was happening in the Penn area. Anyway, now it's in North Tacoma. We have spoken with the city manager about setting up a meeting that would include her and also the chief of police and other senior members of the police department, some of whom are traveling. And the chief, I believe, was at that international chiefs conference and wasn't around this week. So we will have that second meeting, I'm looking forward to that. But 32 or so people showed up. 12 have been broken into just in the last year, some several times. And I won't go into the entire set of points that were put out. I do have a summary of that, which I'll, which I'll pass on. But just four or five of the key items that sort of emerged from the meeting was one, finding a way to have better feedback that doesn't compromise the cases so that when people are victimized, the police are able to go back to them and let them know sort of where things stand with that. What can be done to address the periodic, and it seems like we're in one now, periodic instances when the total police staff available to us is, have several slots down that we, that either are being filled or people are out on various forms of disability and other kinds of situations of that nature. Concerns about the training of the dispatchers, in particular where, as we've talked about before, when you call 911, if you're using your cellphone, you can't call 911, so you call the regular police number and then that gets mixed in with the other calls. What we can do for greater collaboration with our other jurisdictional partners, including Montgomery County, which, where we do have a, an agreement with them in DC, where we're still working on the agreement. And then lastly, specs and guidelines on cameras, alarm systems and the like, and we could use the advice of the police on that. So those are some of the things which hopefully we'll get into when that meeting is scheduled. We hope within two weeks. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. This past week was the Maryland Municipal League's Fall Conference, also known as the Legislative Conference. At this meeting, the membership voted on what should be the three priorities for the upcoming General Assembly Session. And this year, we're going to have two strategic engagement initiatives. The three priorities are going to be, one, highway user fund restoration, storm water management on county-owned property, public utilities and state highway administration coordination with state and local governments, primarily local governments, and that was a Tacoma Park priority. And the two strategic engagement initiatives are body cams and foreclosures. So it was a very good conference. I, over 200 elected officials and senior staff attended, and the Solomons and some of my colleagues were there. Thank you very much. Oh, one, one more thing, an announcement. November 4th, there will be a community tea at Natra's Teas on 7, at 720 Erie Avenue. I hope you can come out so we can talk about what's going on in Ward 5. Thank you.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, yes. 8:00 AM.
Great. Any other council comments? No, all right, I have a couple. One, I want to extend my thanks to Melanie Isis of the Crossroads Development Authority for a terrific Diwali Festival this past Saturday, and to thank county councilwoman Dani Taveras of Prince George's for hosting. It was a terrific event and I was glad that we were able to participate. In addition, I just want to thank our colleague, councilmember Smith, for his work at MML and the legislative session and the fact that one of our priorities is now the chapter priorities, which we're very excited about. That was a great conference. I will let you know that I sat in on a session regarding the law enforcement legislation that was passed last year, and it was a good session with an interesting PowerPoint. And as soon as that is put up on the MML site, I will send it around to everyone. Let's see, the other thing is, is that the city manager, myself, met today with members of them, MCPs, Planning and Construction, regarding the feasibility study at Piney Branch Elementary School. We were joined by Wayne Sherwood, resident here in Tacoma Park, as well as the head of the PTA at Piney Branch and Piney Branch's principal. Basically, what we were, just giving an update on the feasibility study. They are hiring the architect in November. They, they will kick off the study then. They plan to have at least four community meetings, two during the day and two in the evening. We requested that they add a briefing of two and presentation to the city council, which they were amenable to. They hope then that process, and they said it would be an iterative one. After those meetings, after the architect does some designs, they'll come back to some of the community groups and wrap that up in the spring and put their recommendation into the superintendent, who then will pass on his recommendation to the county council. The hoping is that this would be put into the 2019 funding and completion would be in 2021. There was a heavy emphasis on the Piney Branch pool and the future of that. And we did talk about the need for looking at options that would keep the pool as well as expanding classrooms and things like that. So I think it was a fairly successful meeting and we'll go forward from there. And I think that is, oh, actually, there's one other thing I realized. The head of our housing department was here, but I'll ask the city manager. As I was walking here, I had a request regarding the house that was taken down on Lee Avenue. That it's, they were, people were worried about the construction site and because there are a lot of children who walk past there. I have not been able to look at it myself, but I figured I would just pass that along if somebody can take a look at it. And then I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Several quick follow-up items from the last council meeting regarding the, just putting in writing what I mentioned to councilmember Schultz, that the SHA property, Carroll Avenue right of way as it approaches University Boulevard, is indeed SHA property as we all knew, but they've admitted it now.
In writing?
Do we have it in writing?
I think we do. And so there's some options that we tried to share some information. One of the things, of course, SHA would love to have the city pay for whatever needs to be done there. That's not something that is in our budget. And it's also very difficult because the city boundary line along Carroll is very, goes from side to side. And so there's some options that we can discuss in the future and that we've, that we've raised with both the county and the state. Councilmember Smith asked about the status of the construction project at Washington Venice University. That seems to be going, progressing on schedule or well, with no outstanding issues at this time.
Thank you.
We've reported the crosswalk, missing crosswalk signs at Wildwood and Carroll to SHA. And we will report, I think there'd been similar ones at Park and Carroll that we need to report. I also understand that the water is really quite pronounced at water, at, at Park and Carroll. And we've been pushing WSSC to determine where it's coming from. One of my amazing pieces of information today was that the dog park construction will start tomorrow morning about 8:00 AM.
Will there be a ceremony?
We're looking for a date for the grand opening. And-
How about for the groundbreaking?
I'm going to be there. I have to, I'm going to do something to memorialize that. It's a big deal.
My dog would be help, grateful to be able to break the ground with her front, his front paws.
Okay, thanks.
His name is Teddy, by the way.
Also, just confirming that Park Mobile is now an option for our city parking meters. So besides paying with quarters, you can either call in or use the mobile app for Park Mobile. It does involve a 45 cent transaction fee. So we've had one complaint that that was the case, but that is the way that it works.
And is that fee shared with the city or does that just go straight to Park Mobile?
That goes to Park Mobile.
You can still put quarters in there, right?
You can put quarters in.
You don't have to use, you can use, and you can use other- You don't need to use the Park Mobile to use the meters.
You do not.
You can still put money in.
You can put, if you, you can put coins in and you don't pay the extra fee.
I used Park Mobile today on Carroll.
And did it work?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. We appreciate it.
He just hasn't gotten a ticket yet. It's in the mail.
I hope not. Okay, just want to acknowledge that we've had interest by a number of international visitors to come to Tacoma Park. And today, we had a, a nice visit by Mr., I'm not going to say his name right, Jan Simon, who's the mayor of Ostopovich of the South Moravia region in the Czech Republic. And he spoke with a number of folks on sustainability issues. And it was, it was very interesting to, to speak with today. We also will be hosting in November, a number of people in the, in a fellows program with ICMA coming from South and East Asian countries. And so we're looking forward to that. Again, it's community development and sustainability that are our attraction. And we'll also be hosting a community conversation in December with Mr. Miguel Fraga, the First Secretary of the Cuban Embassy here. So it's, it's very interesting. Sometimes people say, well, it's because we're doing all such wonderful things, which we are. We're also very convenient to people who come to Washington DC and want to see a smaller-sized city and how we function. And so it's fun to host them. We always learn something from them, too.
And just regarding the community conversation on Cuba, we're doing with that with the county executive's office.
Right. Just wanted to give an update on CDBG grants that are upcoming. On November 2nd, you'll be asked to consider the use of CDBG funds for- On November 2nd, you'll be asked to consider the use of CDBG funds for yet-to-be-defined streetscape improvements in FY18. A call for proposal for capital projects was issued by staff earlier this summer, and we did not get any, any proposals that met the requirements of the program. And so just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming, and if you have some future questions about it, I can happy to answer that. It will meet the requirements by HUD of being located in low and moderate income areas. Some, you know, nice things that happened, on Friday, we had 90 Tacoma Academy students helping doing a litter cleanup around Tacoma Park.
Excellent.
Yep. The mayor mentioned the Diwali Festival, there was the Long Branch 5K, which I missed, but we had, did have city staff helping to facilitate that, to raise money for the victims of the fire in the apartments in Silver Spring. And I have an update on the public art, the mural on Conway, there has been some beginning, there's a small portion that has been painted, and then there's sketching out that's going on, and we're going to be following that live at times, and also the Bird Calls sculpture Flower and Erie, where the telephone booth is.
Right, I know exactly where it is. How often does the artist work on the project?
I don't know. I'll let you know.
Because I'd love to just.
I've seen people out there at different times, but I'll see if we have an idea about when that's happening, so you know.
Thank you.
So those are my items.
Great. Terrific. Any questions for the city manager? No? Yes, good.
Yes.
I recall in previous years, the police chief presenting information that at this time of the year, October, there was an increased frequency in robberies in the streets in Ward 1, next to Metro.
That's true.
I haven't heard that yet, which makes me think that it's a good time for a warning, if that hasn't happened already, a community alert.
We're certainly going to be coordinating with him, both for next week, but also in response to the concern of the North Tacoma neighbors.
But just on that, I would say, that recent meeting I mentioned was not about what you might call muggings or holdups, but about break-ins. It is the case, though, that typically between when the clocks change and Christmas, when people are coming from the metro, and it's darker, that that's been historically.
But usually, there's been some announcement because.
I'm just suggesting a proactive email before it happens is a, is a good practice. Everything we know that. It's one of the great things that our data analyst now lets us do.
That's true.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So we will turn to our first agenda item this evening, and we would like to thank the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, Chuck Bean. Just to give you all some background, the city of Tacoma Park is an active member in the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. It was founded in 1957. COG is an independent nonprofit association with membership of 300 elected officials from 22 local governments, the Maryland and Virginia State Legislatures, and US Congress. COG is supported by financial contributions from its member governments, federal and state grants and contracts, and donations from foundations and the private sector. And so we're going to thank Mr. Bean for coming this evening, and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and council members for having me this evening. Appreciate being here and appreciate your involvement with COG throughout the year. Jared, of course, is part of the Transportation Planning Board, and media accounts of that meeting today talked a lot about 18-wheelers on the eight, hot, proposed hot lanes in 66s, so there's always something interesting with TPB. And I want to thank Tim for participating on the Chesapeake Bay Water Resources Policy Committee and lending your expertise and conservation particularly to that effort. Mr. Simmons to a couple of policy committee, Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, and the Human Services Public Safety Committee, and I think Mr. Schultz, we talked about the Climate and Energy Policy Committee. So appreciate Tacoma Park's involvement. I think just a few minutes about council governments in general, and then about our relationship with Tacoma Park. But I think message one, I hope that as a result of my presentation, you'll see the benefit of being part of the council governments, and also second message, that you'll see how Tacoma Park's presence at that table enriches our region. So COG, as the mayor said, 22 jurisdictions, about 3,000 square miles, and the 300 elected officials that are part of those jurisdictions. Every month, about 1,500 people come through our doors, and the Council of Governments Board, the Transportation Planning Policy Board, and the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, all independent boards staffed by COG. So we are one, but we are three, and we are three, and we are one. And in our taxonomy, these policy committees that I mentioned are policy committees developed by the board, but probably the entities that undergird all that, what we call our technical committees. So all the police chiefs come to COG on a monthly basis, all the planning directors. The police chiefs, in fact, are chaired by Police Chief Goldberg this year, and City Manager Ludlow participates very actively with all of the other city county managers, what we call the CAO Committee. So these are, these are our boards, and this is part of your handout. Importantly, what we call the Transportation Planning Board, in federal parlance, is called the Metropolitan Planning Organization. There are about 380 MPOs across the, across the country. Every place in the country that has at least 50,000 residents must have an MPO. The carrot for participation for all the jurisdictions is that, in order to get federal funding for any project, that plan must be in the regional plan, and this is the body that creates the regional plan. So that's what, that's what binds us together. COG, and generally, we have about 130 staff, we have about a $30 million core budget, and that jumps to 45 million or 60 million, depending on the pass-through grants that we, that we get. Transportation's our biggest area, also environmental programs, homeland security, and public safety, and community planning. Number of other programs that are listed there, and happy to answer questions about any or all of these. I think that part of the benefit to being a COG is not just the collaboration, not just participation because of a federal mandate, but because of the opportunity to share best practices, that how Arlington can learn from Tacoma Park, and how Falls Church can be, can learn from Green Belt is part of the appeal. But also the collaboration and the opportunity to access one of our 130 subject matter experts that are supporting these technical committees in transportation, in environment, and homeland security. Region Forward is the COG vision for the, for the region, going out through 2050, involves these nine different disciplines. Core to the Region Forward vision, and an opportunity to talk to, talk to Mr. Kovar a bit about this and the growth that's expected in the region. The heart of this is regional definition, the regional collaboration around activity centers. Mixed use, strong mix of housing, pedestrian infrastructure uses and amenities. These 141 places, you can kind of, you would say that they track where the metro stations are, where Mark or VRE is, and other important infrastructure. And Tacoma Park is one of these 141 activity centers, and happy to talk more about that and what it means in the region. Little bit more on nitty-gritty in Tacoma Park and the council governments. We manage a number of grant programs, and some of the pass-through that's come through COG to Tacoma Park includes what we call our TLC program. Often, this is the first money in for a project of strategic significance, doing a feasibility study, rather consulting that's needed, and a $30,000 grant in that area. A larger pot of money is called the Transportation Alternatives Program, and you can see some of the projects in Tacoma Park that have benefited from the TAP program. I think my quick math says that's about $3 million in the last three years or so. Council Governments also manages grant programming around enhanced mobility grant funding, so try to create greater opportunities for those that might have some disadvantages with our transportation system, to get their way to work, other, or health, or other quality of life appointments. So Montgomery County Mobility Management, there was a grant for $196,000, and to the Montgomery County Professional Drivers Union, happy to provide information on more of these programs if that's of interest. I think the larger pass-through is a $14 million investment in the Tacoma Langley Transit Center, and I'm hoping if my schedule cooperates, that I'll be able to join some of you there, I think at an event next, next month. This came through the TIGER program, and COG managed this $58 million program, TIGER standing for Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery. So this is part of the larger stimulus package, but $58 million came to our region, mainly focused on major contributions to the regional bus infrastructure. We run a number of marketing or public awareness campaigns, rather than one county doing it alone, or two counties, they kind of chip in, chip in a lot, chip in a little, so that we can have a greater impact together, as we are one media market. I think on the Street Smart campaign, that will be coming out in the next few weeks. It's obviously no replacement for some design and hard infrastructure, but is part of a larger strategy that the region invests in, in order to keep pedestrians particularly safe. Similarly, there are campaigns in environment around recycling, and around the TAPET campaign, that is the ability to find water, tap water, rather than depending on bottled, bottled water. Some other, other programs in which Tacoma Park's been involved, we have an urban forester on staff, and we received a grant of $165,000 to help with the urban canopy in the region, and also Department Natural Resources Anacostia Restoration Program. Turning from environment to public safety, homeland security, Tacoma Park participates in our RIC system, which stands for Regional Incident Communication Coordination System, which gives text alerts on incidents of regional concern, and I think there are 11 officials under County Manager Ludlow participate in that. For those on the inside, we have the near infamous COG Snow Calls. These are convened at 3:00 AM, and we will have between 100 to 200 people on the line. Thank goodness, everyone is muted, but we'll get, we'll go through a protocol of getting the best forecast from the National Weather Service at 3:00 AM, and the Office of Personal Management will be on the line, asking questions, and then leveraging the expertise of the transportation and public works officials in Maryland, DC, and Virginia, so that everyone at least has full information, and our aspiration is for a coordinated, coordinated response. That's a little bit of COG overall, and I'm going to ask if, if we could, for just a few minutes, for Rick and his message will be how we can save Tacoma, Tacoma Park money.
Thank you, Chuck. He stole my thunder a little bit with that, but that is my job, coming in to COG. My position is new, so I came in to be a central point of contact to build our cooperative purchasing program. As you can see, the items that we're involved with, gasoline and diesel fuel, 40 million gallons a year is what goes through that program, 30 million in diesel, 10 million in gasoline. There's great savings to be had for jurisdictions to ride on those contracts. Personal protective equipment for your fire personnel, ice melt and road salt, we hope that won't be an important commodity this year, but I have a funny feeling that I've heard it might be. So we have contracts available to, to jump on and ride, and it helps, even if you're doing the state contract on road salt, to have backups, and Montgomery County's holding two contracts that we helped to promote. Office supplies, we have a great office supplies contract, paper, things like that that you need to buy. There's a great furniture contract out there that, through the MAT program that we do, and lighting as well. So lots of good things out there that are already in the pipeline. Upcoming cooperative procurements, there's some important ones. We're doing rifle plate body armor for Arlington County is leading that right now for the police to try to give them some, some extra protection that's needed sometimes. EMS medical supplies, I think you have a volunteer group that does an ambulance service, they may be able to ride that contract. That's going to be going on the street first of November, and we'll have a contract in place January. Subscriber radios are a huge item, they're used by just about everybody in the region, 60,000 units, and we think we can save up to $700 to $1,500 per unit. We're talking $50 to $100 million in savings over a 10-year lifecycle. Fleets for the Future is alternative fuel vehicles and equipment, that's coming up after the first of the year, and our next-gen 911 technology, I heard a little bit mentioned about that. The new technology, copper wire's going away, so we're going to have something called Ezzinet, that's going to be kind of a cloud-based system coming up. So that's happening. I wanted to tell you, just in my last slide, the Mid-Atlantic Purchasing Team is this wonderful partnership that we built with Baltimore. R22, they're nine, the buying power, when you put Baltimore, Baltimore County, Anarundel County in with us, is phenomenal, and our contracts kind of ride through there. We help one another, they ride on our contracts, we ride on theirs. Our group at COG acts as sort of a quarterback for the contracts. You guys need a contract to ride, contact me, and I can try to put you with a contract that you can ride, and avoid that bidding cost, because I know that, you know, a jurisdiction that doesn't have a dedicated purchasing office, you need, anybody that can help you save time for your staff is really important. So, and we also have this vendor registration system that allows vendors to register, making your bids more competitive, and giving you access to contracts, access to current solicitations. So we have a lot going on, trying to build this program. I'd love to see more engagement with Tacoma Park, and you have my information, please call me if you need anything. And I'll give it back to Chuck, he's got a couple more things to say.
Thank you. It appears that Rick might speak as fast as a New Yorker, but he has roots in small, small-town Maryland. I think this is pretty much a summary, and talked a lot about these policy committees, and happy to discuss anything further with, with the council, or if there's any questions that I might answer to, or to clarify.
Great, terrific. Councilmember Smith, would you like to start us off?
Thank you. Mr. Bean, I appreciate you being here. The Council of Governments is a very important institution for our region. My question has to do with transportation. Are the purple line stops part of what is considered the activity centers? Have they been included in that, that, I guess, database, or whatever we call all these 100-and-some activity centers that we have in the region?
I think one, one important point is of all the 141 activity centers throughout the region, that all of them are derived from the local comprehensive plan, Montgomery County or Prince George's County. And I, I don't know for a fact that all of the stops will be, but if that was in the plans as of a couple of years ago, then they would be activity centers, and as that moves forward, I think that they would be, they would epitomize what activity centers would be. I would editorialize a bit, I think this opportunity is not only a transportation opportunity, but an economic development opportunity. I think if that line were branded leveraging the federal laboratories line, it might have even had more speed, rather than the, rather than the purple line.
You mentioned that I serve on the Transportation Planning Board, and the one thing that I have not been able to figure out is how do you introduce new ideas into whether it's the long-term planning or the board itself? Because you, you know, the state of Maryland has all these projects that have been around for a very long time, and most of these projects are road projects, right? And so if we really want to get cars off the road, how do we start looking at now more additional purple line stations to activity centers like Wheaton or White Oak? How does that happen? How do we introduce the possibility of the purple line on I-270, rather than just expanding it for more vehicular traffic? And then the idea of autonomous cars is real, right? The CEO of Lyft was on Bloomberg yesterday, and he said that in five years, it's going to happen in major metropolitan cities. That includes District of Columbia, right? So how are we planning for that? Because I saw in one of the reports that Northern Virginia is looking at it, but I haven't seen anything else that other parts of COG membership is looking at autonomous cars.
I'll, I'll start with a more official answer to your core question, then maybe a unofficial, more strategic piece of advice. The official answer is, part of the work of the TPB involves two other acronyms, the Transportation Program, or the TIP, and that is going out the next few years. And then the, the larger plan is the 25-year plan, the constrained long-range plan. And the word constrained means it's the long-range plan for the region, but it's financially constrained. So the, the term of art here is, to get in the plan, funds must be reasonably expected. So that means, like if you're putting together, I often think of a Hollywood movie, so it's going to cost $10 million, whatever movies cost. So it's going to cost $10 million, whatever movies cost, that one part's going to put in a 5 million, another 2 million and another 3 million and there, there you got a, there you got a project. So the transportation planning process for the region, it's not such that a $25 billion check is written to the Council of Governments and the TVB divvies it up. It's kind of the opposite, inverted. So the money is coming from the localities or from, from the states. So I, I think the more strategic answer then is a locality needs to leverage the state or a municipality within a county needs to leverage the county then to leverage the state and then the federal comes on that. I think finally, I think, you know, you and Mayor Stewart having a coffee with Mayor Bridget Newton from Rockville would be strategic because she will be the chair of the TVB next year.
Yes, thank you. And we had already intended to do that.
And I'm affirming your good judgment.
Hey, Councilmember Schultz.
One of the activity centers I perceive is the, the area of the crossroads area that I mentioned in my opening remarks. And we, because it's a bi-county situation, one side of which is incorporated, Montgomery County side is incorporated, but the other side in Prince George's County is totally unincorporated and there's no organizational structures whatsoever. And yet it's a very vital business community, albeit mostly of an ethnic type of business. But the, the retail vacancy rate in, in our side of that crossroads is nine, is two, less than 2%. The office vacancy rate in that immediate area is zero. It's huge disposable income. We're, that's, that's pretty much captive because of the density of people that shop in that area. And as you may know, that, that intersection with, the reason that that Tiger grant was granted for the, for the transit center is because it's the busiest non-metro intersection in the state of Maryland. We, we are trying to figure out how to jointly organize that area. And I'm thinking, and this is not an original thought on my part, is that COG by virtue of the kind of entity that you are, could possibly be able to provide technical assistance to the, to the city of Tacoma Park, Prince George's County, as well as, you know, all the stakeholders in that area to help us work on this. And it's, from a timing point of view, it's important because the purple line is beginning construction now. And there's a lot of interest, you know, self, you know, people are self-motivated to sort of pay attention to this now. And, and if the, if the COG could be, find a way to help us with technical assistance as you have in the past with other projects, it could be a terrific, terrific opportunity for us. And it's just something I, a seed that I want to plant in your mind if I could at this point in time.
Yeah, I think it would be, the opportunities there is that sounds like one of these Transportation Alternatives Program grants or Transportation Land Use Connections, TLC grants. But I think it would of course be up to Tacoma Park of what is the priority in, in order to seek one of these grants. And I think there'd be some cognizance also that Tacoma Park has punched way above its weight class and ability to generate all of these grants. So that's a little bit of managing, managing expectations. But that, that's what would, would occur to me.
Yeah, and on that, I mean, we were very fortunate to get quite a lot of money upfront for, with those. But I think that the more that we can have Prince George's County step up and put in for some of the requests with our support, it would be very useful.
Okay. Alternatively, if that doesn't pan out, we're, we're seeking to leverage more value through our partners. And what comes to mind is the Urban Land Institute and we have a partnership with them. It's called a TAP, Technical Advisory Panel, that brings experts in for some technical assistance. So that would be another avenue to look at.
Okay. Councilmember Mel?
I'll be brief because my voice is not great. In the procurement conversation we just had, is it possible to do, for the, for COG to do procurement in terms of solar panels and getting a system under which R and other governments could buy into solar panel purchases?
Absolutely. I think the two mechanisms would be to ride whatever contracts might already exist and that thus you're saving money on the administration side, also some economies of scale. I think more generally, Council of Governments has been involved with Virginia Sun, Maryland Sun, DC Sun. There's a nice article in the Fredericksburg Post, I think that's the, that's the name of it today, that had some grant money that supported some solar panel efforts in the city of Fredericksburg. But it's a longer answer, but we'll make sure it's on the list.
Great, thanks.
There's an existing contract.
Okay, thanks. And just the one other comment I'd say is thank you for all the work you do. COG is a critical institution that deals with, you know, a bipartisan set of jurisdictions and does fantastic things that most people don't know about. But it's really a wonderful set of services and support and capacity that you all provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovacs?
Thank you. Yeah, this relates to what Councilmember Schultz was talking about and also what we were talking about earlier on the.
The crime question at, at the border. So I assume this is something you have to deal with all the time because there are the three main jurisdictions and then the smaller ones within those. And so, but we have, unlike the situation that Councilmember Schultz mentioned, in this section near the metro here is we have our, one of our smaller, but still important commercial sectors as part of the city. And then it's connected directly to the same thing in the district. And most people, even people who've lived here for a long time, aren't even sure where the boundaries of, of the two are. So it's really like, it's like one economic unit, so-called Old Town Tacoma. And yet it's not even a situation that Mr. Schultz was talking about where it's within Maryland, but an incorporated part, unincorporated, but it's basically two separate states. If, I, I realize the people in the district don't yet get to really call themselves a state, but it's two separate jurisdictions in that way. So I'm just wondering sort of more generally, what's been the experience on how best to do that? Are there other places or maybe around the borders of the district where that happens? Where there's an incorporated city or town that shares an economic center like that with the border running through it?
I think if, if I understand the question, I'd start with COG is almost 60 years old and mutual aid agreements between law enforcement, mutual aid agreements between fire and EMS has been one of our earliest achievements. Of course, it keeps getting fine-tuned. And I think that may be one reason why Chief Goldberg's peers from Prince George's, Montgomery and the district thought that he would be such a good chair of the Police Chiefs Committee for the region is that he probably deals with this, deals with this every day. On the topic of mutual aid agreements and related to public safety would be 911 and you mentioned that. I think that this is going to be in a top five priority for COG in the next couple of years. And coming to the CIO, CIO committee soon will be a consideration of a regional memorandum of understanding about how the jurisdictions will work together to transition from current 911 to next generation 911. So some of the things that you mentioned in the council's remarks will be hopefully addressed or ameliorated. I happen to live in Arlington and I know in Arlington, in North Arlington, cell towers might pick up from the district. And unfortunately, there's not an optimal electronic system for the DC 911 operator to take that and automatically get to the Arlington 911 operator. That's under the current system, but under the new system, besides being cloud-based, we hope that we have opportunities for greater integration and seamlessness so that people get the help they need as fast as they need it. So next generation 911, I think will be a big deal for us in the next two years.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. I just want to echo what Councilmember Mel said. We're very appreciative to the work of COG. I very much enjoy being on the board and so thank you very much. One thing is if you have an opportunity to send us more information about the tree canopy analysis. We have been doing a lot of discussion regarding trees and the tree canopy and it would be interesting to see the work that COG is doing on that in the region.
Brian Lekkertour is our lead staff on that, so we'll make sure that that gets passed up. And thank you for your time tonight and hope you understand, although we are a nonpartisan organization, I do have some interest in tonight's debate.
Great, all right. Well, you have 29 minutes to get home to Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, we will move on now to our voting session. We have a resolution providing direction on the conversion to LED street lighting and I'm going to.
We have a revised item in your package, item two. This item simply confirms the kind of straw poll that the council took several weeks ago on September 21st. And I appreciate that there'd been a lot of discussion and just checking on how we worded this and the kinds of things that we would be looking at as we would proceed to save energy in Tacoma Park, continue to move forward with LED lights as we have already put on Flower Avenue and at the Ethan Allen Intersection. This resolution has correction and an additional whereas clause, I guess it's the fourth down, which just acknowledges that the city has already begun LED conversion with the Flower Avenue-Green Street project and that 5% of the city's streetlights have already been converted. And we would be keeping track of that. One of the things that I think is attractive about the approach that we are looking to take is that by going on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, we can identify what's appropriate for a particular street. We can identify and be flexible as there's changes in technology or filters or adjustments so that the kinds of concerns that people have about overly bright lighting, blue tint lighting, any kind of health or, or wildlife effects are things that we keep in mind and minimize. So far, we've been pretty pleased with the work that we've done so far. We recognize that there's adjustment even on future LED lighting that can be done, dimmable, you know, timing on those kinds of things. All of the things that the Public Works Director identified in speaking to you. So I don't know if there's some particular questions, but I think that we would like to move forward with our work with PEPCO on this and would like your support.
Before I ask for the resolution to be moved, does anybody have any clarifying questions for the city manager? Councilmember Koreshi?
Madam City Manager, I think you have been privy to some communication and I think you've addressed this from members of the community. Mr. Sherman raised this issue. Just so it could be clarified for the record, what level of flexibility do we have as a body to, as what seems to be a changing sort of moving target on this issue of what's appropriate? And based on Ms. Braithwaite's comments to us, it seems as if there may be even a street-by-street analysis done to see what is appropriate in any given situation for both drivers and residents. Just so, I think it can put certain people at ease because I think it's important, passing this resolution, what impact does it have and to what extent does this council have flexibility to make amendments if, which I hope and I encourage the Safe Road Days Committee to still proceed in the event that we vote for this today, to provide us an analysis that they've recommended? And we recognize based on their analysis that it may be worth it to revisit this resolution.
We certainly can come back at any time. The council can make amendments to this resolution at any time. The staff certainly understands the intent of the council and our personal intent that we have appropriate levels of lighting that are safe and that are accepting, acceptable to the various residential streets. So you've got full flexibility. We do have some upcoming discussions with PEPCO about the process to get this going. I'd like to have those meetings continue, but it's going to take a while that we're actually getting to, to do the next round of streets. So I mean, I think there's plenty of time to hear further input on, on which options and what kind of limits are appropriate, are appropriate for us.
So safe to say if this council passes this resolution tonight, next Monday, you're not receiving a large shipment of LED lights that are irreplaceable?
No.
And I'd just like to remind my colleagues that we, the reason we're doing this resolution tonight is for the very purpose that you are describing, Councilmember Koreshi. We had already given staff the go-ahead on September 21st to start moving in this direction. As Councilmember Mel has noted, we've already started moving in this direction, have converted 5% of our lights. However, given comments by Mr. Sherman and other residents, we felt it was important to have a resolution that we were on the record saying that these are issues regarding LED lights that we're concerned about and want to continue to look into. So that's exactly why we actually want to pass this resolution this evening. Councilmember Mel?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question before making remarks, comments later on after it's been introduced. Is there a budget, in terms of the process going forward, will there potentially be costs at certain intervals that would require either action during the city budget process or action separately from that? Or because this is basically something where we're costing it out through our existing billing system, that we won't see it again from a budget perspective?
The, the process that we're moving, that we can move forward with without any action would be one where we're simply going through the PEPCO process and we're not bonding for up, you know, for upfront purchases. And I think that, so it'll be discussed when we go through the budget process, but it's not, you know, part of the reason we're doing this is to save money, not to allocate additional funds. Also, I think that one of the advantages of this process is that by not buying a lot of lights now, we're not locking ourselves into lights that we may not like or precluding an option that they may, the price may come down or there may be some other programs in the future to minimize the costs, so.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say I support this. I believe Flower Avenue was the first street in the city to have a conversion.
That's right.
Okay. I, I would ask that if we pass this resolution, that we do pass it on to the city of Somerset because they're very interested in LED conversion and they want to follow us.
Right.
During the Fall Conference, that was one of the topics, one of their council members wants to discuss.
They've been in communication with us for some months.
Correct, good. Now regarding the Flower Avenue project, have there been any complaints about the light spilling over or there's not enough light on the street? Because I'm not familiar with it.
I have not heard that particular concern.
Okay.
Can't rule that out, but I've not heard that particular concern.
Okay.
One of the things that, as was mentioned, the idea, sometimes there's areas where there's too little light and we're trying to address it. And that's something that we'll be looking at.
Right.
Or vice versa.
Now, PEPCO told us initially that they were going to give us this online system so that we could make changes in real time to the lighting system. Has that been implemented?
It's not been implemented yet.
Okay. And that would be able to, I guess, if there were concerns, we could fix them.
That's right. My understanding is that the fixtures that have been installed so far incorporate that technology so that when the software's lined up, we can use it.
No, it's my understanding before we installed the LED lights, we had an audit done on the lighting and where we should have more or less or whatever. Was that done again once we installed all the LEDs or?
I don't know.
Just to check and see if, you know?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
I'll find out.
All right, appreciate it.
Councilmember Schultz?
One question. At some point in time, as we do this on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, people are going to want to know, well, when's my neighborhood coming? And so what we would want to be able to do, I think, is to be able to let people know that schedule, whenever it's, whenever we get around to being able to even produce a schedule. And the nature of, of the things that will be looked at, like adequacy of light at certain at certain locations. One of the questions, I mean, I'm wondering, are we going to be able to do that, to publish a schedule or create a schedule, so that people can sort of know that, well, we don't have to worry about it this year because we're going to get these lights next year or something?
I would hope so. I think it'd be very similar to the road improvement schedules that we have. Similarly to our work on sidewalks and roads, sometimes it may go along with a different kind of construction project that's underway, so we complement, because we're making changes anyway, it might be the appropriate place. There may be also neighborhoods where there's a particular problem with lighting that we want to address.
Yeah.
I don't have that schedule at this time. I think that's part of what needs to be looked at.
Right, I realize that that'll take some time to prepare. The other question is that within a neighborhood, there may be areas where you want to have much brighter lights, like at an intersection, or, I don't know, some particular reason, such that it wouldn't necessarily mean that all the lights would be totally uniform everywhere and all of that, but that we will have the flexibility of making, putting up different brightnesses.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, alright, will someone like to move the resolution?
Both.
Councilmember Mayo, would someone like to second? Councilmember Smith, any discussion or other comments? Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I support this, I appreciate the city's work on it. To the comments from Mr. Sherman and others in the community, we can absolutely keep working on those issues, including meetings with the Safe Roadways Committee and any other, you know, processes that go forward. So, I just wanted to not just affirm the city's indication there, but also for myself as a councilman, because this will be a process, as you said, that plays out over a while. We have different light fixtures in the city right now.
Mm-hmm.
Different, you know, different things at different ages have gone through three, at least three rounds in the last 80 years of changing light bulbs out and putting new technology in, in a phase process. I'd also just add that I have LED lights in most of my house and most of my fixtures, and it's been a good change. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
I just want to follow along with what Councilmember Mayo said, and that I would personally also say we'll do whatever we need to, to ensure going forward that the concerns that the Safe Roadways expressed are addressed. I've heard from lots of people in the ward that I represent, and of course, this being Tacoma Park, my next-door neighbor's an expert in LED lights, and so I think we're going to have a lot of input from the community on it, and I think we'll be able to get there. I think this resolution gives us the flexibility to do what we need to do without the need for a delay in considering it, so I do support it also. Thanks.
That's my impression.
I just wanted to also say that I support this, and I think I've looked at this issue closely, and even based on Mr. Sherman's comments of last month, I echoed a lot of his concerns, and I think that this council took that into consideration. I don't believe that what the Safe Roadways Committee wants to do is precluded by passage of this resolution, and in fact, I would not discourage them from doing that, but would encourage them to continue, stay in touch with council, and provide us insight on the issues that I think are important to them and also the community.
And I would just want to echo what my colleagues just said, that I think we've said it before on this council, that we very much appreciate all of the committees that residents volunteer for, and in particular, the Safe Roadways Committee over the years have provided great information and advice to this council and prior councils, and I hope going forward. And as my colleague said, I think this is going to be a long process. We are not getting the light bulbs delivered tomorrow. We're going to be working together on this, and I look forward to that. So, with no other comments, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, resolution passes. Next is a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for construction of a bumpout and concrete pad to accommodate a bike-share station. This is a new one as well?
Right. There's just additional information in terms of the plans, the locations of the actual stations. And Mr. Osborne is here, if there's any questions.
I don't know if you need to say a whole lot?
No, just that the, this ordinance and the one following are really just implementing the expansion of the bike-share program in Tacoma Park with two additional stations along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, one at the, in the Tacoma-Lanley crossroads area, which is the bumpout that is in this ordinance, and another at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. And the second ordinance deals with the purchase of the equipment from Montgomery County. The city was awarded funds from the Maryland Department of Transportation last year to execute this program, and so this is just us implementing it.
Okay.
One quick question? One of the things that I heard, maybe you can just give us a couple of minutes on this, was on the necessity for, in addition to the bumpout, the additional added concrete platform, I think, that went along with that, and why that was needed at that site. I had a few questions from residents on that.
Sure. So, the bumpout is, so first of all, the site at the crossroads, this is the third iteration of trying to find the right site, just due to some other issues there, like the purple line construction and trying to accommodate some of the other uses. As you know, and was discussed earlier, the crossroads is a very busy area for pedestrians and vehicles. And this particular spot in the parking lane of Kirkland Avenue is right next to the driveway with the Saul Shopping Center, where the Starbucks and Bank and Chuck E. Cheese and all that are. But it's also the approach from New Hampshire Avenue, there's a kind of off-ramp almost. And so, while in some cases, bike-share stations have been placed on asphalt surrounded by flex posts and other kinds of markings, in this particular location, building the bumpout is a much better option, particularly for the safety of pedestrians in that area. One of the reasons why we were interested in the bumpout was as a pedestrian safety improvement there, there are several pedestrians that cross between the office and commercial buildings at that location, and there is a lot of space with fast-moving vehicles. It's a very awkward intersection. I'm sure Councilmember Schultz is very familiar with this intersection. And so, this bumpout would be a traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvement that the flex posts, I don't think, would provide that same kind of safety and would liable, would, could be liable to be hit by trucks and other cars that are kind of coming off that area quickly.
But you had checked also with Montgomery County about this?
Right, I mean, we had looked at this as an option. There's a couple of other reasons why it's not maybe the best fit for that kind of application. Often, when a bike-share station is placed on the road itself, it's adjacent to a bike lane, which provides additional buffer from the moving traffic. In this case, we don't have a bike lane that's on Kirkland Avenue, and so the grade-separated curb would be a better safety improvement. But also, in discussions with Montgomery County, who operate and maintain the bike-share equipment, they wouldn't be comfortable with that application either. But really, the safety component was the main reason.
And that includes the concrete pad as well?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just first would like to say that I support these two ordinances. It's great to see that it was only maybe a year ago when you guys had proposed and eventually installed the bike-share on Flower Avenue, that-
Yeah, a couple of years, maybe.
Yeah, about a year and a half, right. Councilmember Schultz did make a request and wanted to know when there were going to be bike shares in Ward 6. And this is excellent, that this became a priority for staff, and we went out and got a grant, so that now I think the entire city has access to bike shares. Is that correct?
Most of the city will have access within a quarter to a half mile.
Okay. And how many bike shares total are there now?
There are five within the city limits. This will bring it up to seven. The total system has over 400, and that just was increased again because it's in Fairfax now.
And since I have you here, is there any, any more discussions on Piney Branch and Flower in that area? I know we had, in front of the theater, that died, but have you looked at maybe the JBG property that's on the corner?
I mean, we haven't looked at any location outside of the city limits.
But has Montgomery County talked to you? Have you heard anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, there isn't any proposal for an additional bike-share station in that area. The county right now is working on some of their other activity centers, as was mentioned earlier, so they're looking at Wheaton, White Flint, some of those areas to expand.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, thank you. I'm following up on Councilmember Kovar's question. So, I think, understanding the drawing for the location on Kirkland Avenue, the ramp you have makes sense, that's a bumpout for pedestrian and bike use. But I think what's part of the proposal, just sort of confirming, is that the location where the bike-share station is would also be raised up by five inches of concrete or something like that. And so, I guess my question is not why the ramp and the piece right near the curb or the corner makes sense, but whether, you know, why it wouldn't just be a bike-share station bordered by a curb. I mean, these curbs are sort of routinely used in other parts of the city, and I'm struggling to think of exactly where I've seen it, but where there's just a, you know, raised curb with, you know, lower pavement on both sides as a barrier.
Well, a couple, you wouldn't be able to take the bike out, because it would be basically in a tub, without having to raise it over a curb.
Right. You could put gaps in the curb.
We could put gaps in the curb, but at that point, I mean, the cost is really not that much more to make it a flush level surface.
You sure?
Yes.
And does the cost cover the installation of the station itself?
The, that's covered in the second ordinance.
Okay.
It's part of the purchase of the equipment.
So, the cost of the bumpout for the ramp and the curb would be the same as the cost for the bumpout for the ramp and the concrete pad under the share station?
The addition of the concrete pad is, I mean, once you've built the bumpout with the ramp and you've done the excavation, adding the, filling in a, within the curb to bring it to a level surface would be a sort of a nominal expense at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it was, it is, it was a good idea, it's just the application doesn't fit right in this location.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I support this location. I'm really grateful that we're going to be getting these two bike-share locations, and they're close enough together that they will kind of feed off of each other, so as to encourage more people to even consider taking a bike out to that end of the city. I think that the location at Kirkland is really a superior location, because as was mentioned, the high density of pedestrian traffic, the proximity of the new transit center, which is going to open someday soon, and of course, the purple line in the future. By putting it here, we won't ever have to think about having to relocate it because of new construction going on, I don't, I don't think. So, I think it's an excellent, excellent location. I also think that the design makes sense, because one of my concerns about putting it on the pavement, look, on the pavement, is that then the bikes and all the station, all the equipment that goes with supporting it, and there, you have to deal with the stormwater runoff that is part of that, you know, coming down the street, you have to worry about the collection of debris, and also, as was mentioned earlier, as you said, because of that, the almost chaotic traffic movements there, it needs to be on a very distinct, clear, separate platform, because of all the cars that come by, even tractor trailers use Kirkland in order to access some of the businesses in the Hampshire Langley Shopping Center, and then I worry about snowplows coming through. So, it's, it's just, it may, you know, I just think that situation, that particular location justifies the kind of design that is being implemented there. So, thank you so much for this. I think you've done a nice job of figuring out where this needs to be.
Great, alright, so we have two single reading ordinances. We'll do the first, a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for construction of a bumpout and concrete pad to accommodate a bike-share. Who would like to move that, please?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, do I have a second?
Second.
And the, Councilmember Caressi, any other questions or comments on this ordinance? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have to, sorry, right, ordinance, we have to do a roll call, sorry, forgot.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Caressi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Alright.
Eyes, eyes, eyes.
Alright, next we have a resolution providing for appointments to the Noise Control Board. Glad to see we finally have enough folks to have this resolution. Would someone like to pass the resolution?
Could I just?
Oh, you have a question? Sorry. It's really hot in here.
It doesn't matter, but yes, I'm sorry.
It is really, really hot.
Just a quick comment, I support this and will vote for it. I noticed that in this case, as in some others, some of our other committees, the ward distribution is not necessarily as wide as we would like it, and maybe that's just on all of us to do more, to try to reach out and find people from different locations. But at some point, I think we might want to look at, you know, exactly how we do that, to just push for a little bit more of a wider distribution among all the committees. Some have and some don't, and in some cases, it's just a quirk of how the applications have come in, but I think it's something not now that I would object to here, but just something we may want to take a look at in the future.
Okay. Councilmember Mayo?
Just commenting that I would love for the city to do basically an exit survey for members who are leaving committees, anonymous, and ask for their views on, you know, what worked well for their committee, what didn't work, you know, just a narrative form that we could periodically, once a year, get the results from. Thank you.
Great. Now, would someone like to move this resolution?
Someone would.
Councilmember Caressi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Kovar, a second. Any other conversation or questions on this? Alright, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Now, what are we up to? Our two work sessions. I would like to do the presentation and discussion of the Grants Review Committee, recommendations for FY '17 community grants. So, the committee chair, you on your own tonight?
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
No.
You, I think you are on your own tonight.
Wow, alright, I am from New York, so I'll try to talk fast. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, do you want me to just read out our recommendations, or do you want to just go right to questions?
I want to do a quick recap for us.
Okay. We entertained 12 grant proposals. We, there were some that, in addition to those 12, that we, that were deemed ineligible, and there were some that were withdrawn. They had submitted originally letters of intent that were withdrawn. So, we had $60,000 to disburse, with a minimum of $5,000 for a grant, with a maximum of $10,000, and we had, as I said, 12 proposals that we considered. Going down the list, as you guys have in front of you, Adventist of Greater Washington requested $10,000, and we recommend, we recommend to the council a $10,000 grant. Artivate, which is formerly Class Axe Arts, they had just changed their name, they had requested $10,000, we recommend $9,000. Carpe Diem Arts was withdrawn. Collaborative Council requested $9,412, we recommended full funding for that. Dance Exchange requested $10,000, we recommend $5,740. Docs in Progress requested $10,000, we're recommending $8,238. EduCare was deemed ineligible. Let's Play America also deemed ineligible. Man Up also deemed ineligible. requested $10,000, we recommend $9,000. Carpe Diem Arts was withdrawn. Collaborative Council requested $9,412, we recommended full funding for that. Dance Exchange requested $10,000, we recommend $5,740. Docs in Progress requested $10,000, we're recommending $8,238. EduCare was deemed ineligible. Let's Play America also deemed ineligible. Man Up also deemed ineligible. MHP, Montgomery Housing Partnership, requested $6,500, we have recommended full funding for that, $6,500. Mubius requested $10,000, we recommend not funding that at this cycle. OTBA requested $6,720, we're recommending to not fund them at this cycle. Real Food for Kids requested $7,619, we're recommending that they are not funded at this cycle. Ryzome has withdrawn their application. Tacoma Ensemble requested $10,000, we're recommending $5,740. Brings the total of grants awarded that we're recommending to $60,000.
Thank you. Councilmember Mael?
Just a couple of questions, and let me just spit them out in order so I can hold onto my voice. If, just broadly, you know, if you could talk about the $900,000 request, $900,000 project budget for all of them combined, and the $166,000 requested, where does, where do grantees' other sources of funding come from? That's my first question. Just let me, let me add, put three on the table. Now, the second is if you could sort of broadly comment on the ineligibility withdrawal, you know, sort of generally what was happening there. And then my third comment is specific, and in the previous, I think, the non, the version of the, of this list that I looked at online, there was a, what I thought was a very nice project to help young girls focus on standard education that seems to have been withdrawn. So I was just curious what happened with that one specifically.
Okay. So the first question was the organizations, where do, where would they get other funding from? Is that, okay. So a lot of the, I'm going to make generalizations since, rather than go through each specific organization, but they would typically request money from Montgomery County, City of Tacoma Park, the Community Foundation for the National Capital Region, corporate sponsorships, also corporate foundations, individual donors and family foundations, things like that. So government, corporate, and individual donations, as well as just, they'll do fundraising activities like events and such, special events. It varies wildly upon, depending on the organizations. Something like Tacoma Radio, not in the same league fiscally as something like Montgomery Housing Partnership. So Montgomery Housing Partnership has development staff. They have a lot more tentacles out there to get money from more organizations and more money from those organizations, where something like Tacoma Radio didn't apply this time, but smaller organization looking for much more local money, much smaller amounts generally. Second question.
Withdrawals and.
Withdrawals.
Thank you. So organizations may withdraw their, their application because they feel that their application won't be competitive. I mean, there are a couple, I'm going to generalize again. Their application may not be competitive. They may feel that their application doesn't fit in the guidelines that we've laid out through the recommendations that we've laid out in, in the guidelines, like whether they don't serve a large enough population from the City of Tacoma Park, whether or not they're not targeting low income or moderate income populations. It's really up to them. We, we didn't ask them why they withdrew, so they can volunteer that information, but it really depends on the organization as to why they would withdraw. And with regards to ineligibility, again, if the organization is deemed ineligible for reasons of it doesn't serve a large enough population in the City of Tacoma Park, I believe 75%, 75% I believe is the, is the, the minimum that we have residents in Tacoma Park. If it doesn't target low and moderate income populations, which is a priority for us, other ineligible, it may not be a nonprofit organization. In the past, we've had organizations deemed, I'm sorry, we've had applicants deemed ineligible due to them not being organizations. If they're, if they don't have a fiscal agent, they're actually not allowed to submit an application if they are not a nonprofit and, or don't have a fiscal agent. Again, various reasons.
Okay, thanks. And I withdraw my third question because I now found it on the list.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. So, appreciate the presentation. When you look at the grant requests and then the amount recommended, in some cases, it's fairly similar or equal to it. So the first two, for example, the request was $10,000 and they received $10,000, or the request was $10,000 and they got $9,000, and Collaboration Council as well, and a few of the others. But then in other cases, they're reduced. What is that connected to or based on? What would lead one to get just a little less and one to get a lot less, but still a generous amount?
Okay. So, for instance, somebody that may have requested $10,000 that gets $5,000. A couple of reasons. One, the competitiveness of their proposal versus others. If their proposal was strong, but maybe not quite as strong as the other proposals. Also, the reality that we have $60,000 in which to disperse, we can only disperse $60,000. So we are limited strictly from a financial, from a number of dollars we can disperse, as a point of view, standpoint. But just the competitiveness of their proposal, if we feel that, again, balancing all applicants that we're deciding to fund, we also had, this year, we had the, the minimum of $5,000. So we couldn't go below $5,000. But for an organization that may have gotten a little over $5,000 and asked for $10,000, we could say, well, given this organization's history, their ability to carry out the project as laid out in the proposal, we feel this organization can still do the project or submit a revised budget for the project after we say, look, you're only going to get $5,800 for your project. How do you, how will you, how are you going to plan to alter this project and still carry it out? Also, organizations like Montgomery Housing Partnership or Dance Exchange, which have large, relatively speaking, large development staff, they have a lot of feelers out there for contributed revenue. They can send, they are sending other applications out, other proposals out, other organizations for funding. Just because we may fund them at 60% of requested amount, that doesn't mean that they're going to do the project at 60%. That just means they will go to the other areas that they will go to, or shift money around, maybe take some general operating funds they get from another organization and put it into that project.
So for the ineligible ones, then, so we got a supplementary thing here that lists four of them that were not recommended for funding, but there's a few more that were not recommended for funding. So is that summarized somewhere else, or?
Ineligible and not recommended for funding are different. The ones that are not recommended for funding were eligible for funding, but we felt that their proposals were just not as competitive as the others in the group. And again, the reality that we only had $60,000 to give, plus the fact that if we were to fund them at all, we'd have to fund them at the minimum of $5,000. So.
So for the ineligible,
Mm-hmm.
is, is there an indication of why they didn't, why they were found ineligible?
Again, there, I'm sorry. Oh, a, a couple, different reasons for different organizations. Whether it was because they didn't provide an adequate matching component, which we require for every dollar that the city gives, that at least $1 is matched by other grant.
I guess what I'm asking, I, I don't want to have to explain all that now, as you sort of did to Councilmember Mael, but could we get later what it was in each case that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. That'll be helpful. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the report. You know, you guys have a very difficult job. A lot of good organizations apply for grants, and you can't fund 100%.
No.
What percentage this year did you guys fund or recommend for funding?
What percentage of organizations or what percentage of dollars?
What percentage of organizations that applied that you actually recommended for funding?
I can, let me do a quick count. 12, I believe 12 proposals were entertained and refunded 75% of them.
There you go, thank you.
So, there you go.
Did you, in your deliberations of the committee, did you guys consider the council's proposal for the partnership? Was that part of any of your discussion?
We used a rating system, and one of the things that was a part of that rating system was what partnerships are these organizations either entering into or have already established for this project that they, they're looking to carry out?
But not the, the council's proposal for a partnership with organizations in the city? That was.
Oh, you mean a partnership between two organizations to do a specific project?
The council last year, we came up with a proposal to do partnerships. It'd be long-term relationships, grants, contracts with nonprofits. During your deliberations, did that ever come up?
Sarah, do you? Sarah may, may be able to chime in on that, but I'm happy to help as well.
I apologize. The Grants Review Committee did not take into consideration any of the community partnership opportunities. That was not part of the conversation. The reality is the three projects that were determined to be ineligible would be more appropriate fits for the community partnership program. In fact, one of them is already receiving funding through that program and had submitted a proposal that was very similar to what's already included in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Now, we are, Tacoma Park is in a unique situation because of our geographical location, right? We are next to border the District of Columbia. Some of these organizations that have applied have programming in the district, and we're in Montgomery County, which, you know, some say is wealthy, right? Is there any way that when we work on these grants, it's not in a silo, that we can say, okay, Tacoma Park is doing something, but also the District of Columbia has this process too, right? And Montgomery County has a process.
When you mean process, do you mean like a, a similar project or a similar grant-making process?
A similar grant-making process. Because, you know, I talked to a number of these organizations, and when they try to get money from, for example, the county, it's very difficult, right? Because they have a different system. Sometimes it's political, sometimes it just goes through a grant committee, right? But since you guys are this organization that reviews grants, and some of you are grant so-called experts, right, that at least there would be some type of information to let people know that there are these other opportunities out there. And maybe, you know, your grant committee could talk to the county's grant committee, we could have one application. Because it's, 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 there's, the dollars are shrinking for everybody, right?
More hands out, fewer dollars.
Yes. But the work continues to grow.
One of the things our committee incorporated this year was using the Washington Regional Area Grantmakers Common Application.
Right.
So that's, that's helpful for, for a lot of different ways. It's helpful for the grant seekers, the organizations, because they use this application form for their letter of intent, for their application, for their reporting, for us. They may use it for the county, they may use it for local foundations, other organizations, other foundations that, that use that. Very popular and I would say very easy to understand application form. It also helps us as grant makers, reviewing these proposals, to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges. It's a very clear and concise application form. So it helps us do our job better and more quickly. So that's one thing, that's one thing that we have done, and I think we're going to try to streamline and make it even better. We're going to tweak it as we go. Another thing we do is we have information sessions, daytime and evening, where potential applicants can come and ask questions so that we can answer those questions. And the people from the committee that attend those forums or sessions try to impart their expertise on these organizations, some larger, but also some smaller, with maybe not as much experience, and say, look, there are these other grant-making sources out there, whether it be the county, whether it be the State Arts Council, the city, the county arts council, whether it be this foundation or that foundation, or this resource where you could go to, like the Foundation Center, or the Maryland Association of Nonprofits, where you can go and get this information and do the research to get it. In terms of working in concert with other grant-making entities, that's something we can explore. I can honestly say we can look into it. It would be, my guess is it would be an informal.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying that right now, it seems like everybody's siloed. But Tacoma, Tacoma Park does its work, right? And it's fantastic, don't get me wrong. But another is, a number of these organizations come to me and want me to move, to reach into these other government entities, right? The county or the district, right? And try to move these projects. I'm not an elected official over there in these other bodies. I cannot move money from the county council. It just won't happen, right? But it would be helpful if before these organizations apply for these grants, they could have experts at the table to tell them exactly what they need to do, to make sure that their applications are complete, and they do a county and executive grant at one time.
Some issues with that are that the priorities that the city council has, has, have set for the funds we disperse are going to be different, possibly going to be different than other organizations, other entities. For instance, the county council, I sit on their grants committee, they are very much in, in line with HH, Health and Human Services, low income, Health and Human Services, that is their primary focus. They don't do arts, they don't do, they do, they have the county arts council for that, but they are focused on low income, HHS, a lot of basic needs. Whereas our priorities that you guys have set for us have definitely gotten fine tuned. And I think last year, you instituted the really, let's really focus and made it a high priority for low and moderate income. So there, there isn't always, there aren't always the same priorities for an organization. In terms of, of working together, information sessions, I think, are the best way because, again, different organizations, different grant-making entities have different priorities. But we can still say, being from, some of us are more familiar than others with those organizations and their priorities, we could say, look, we understand these guys are looking for this, these guys are looking for that.
Right, that's exact.
And the common grant application really helps that, too. So.
That's what I'm looking for. That's, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you especially to the entire committee, because we're, see that things have progressed through the years, this year seems to be.
This is button push? Yeah.
So I said, "Thank you," in summary.
You're welcome. I, I heard you, the rest, the rest of the chamber.
But I just was curious, I think things have run smoother, but I am curious if you have any policy changes you would like the council to consider to improve things for the coming years?
Policy changes. We ta, in our meetings, we do talk about, well, you know, for the next cycle, we'd like to consider doing it this way. This past cycle, we used a, a grading formula, which we ended up tweaking a little bit, not a lot. I mean, it was, it's still basically what, what we laid out in the, in the application guidelines. But we're going to tweak it a little bit and fine tune it to make it more streamlined, to make it easier to review, so we don't have five-hour committee meetings where we're, you know, we're trying to compare apples and oranges, and it's, it's difficult. With regards to policy changes, I would have to get back to you on policy changes, but I have to say, it, it is getting easier and more streamlined, both for us. it, it is getting easier and more streamlined, both for us as the committee, but I believe for applicants, and we're gonna try to get out into the community more, which is one of the things the council tests us with. The reason you have the committee is, one of the reasons is to get out there, to have your tentacles out in the community, so we don't just see applicants, the same applicants year, to, year over, year over, year.
Well, I'll leave the, uh, the process fixes to you, and, uh, and encourage you to, uh, you know, think about and, and come to the council.
We absolutely will.
Through the mayor, if you have any recommendations.
Give us more money, that's, well, you knew I was gonna say that, so, all right.
Or you represent an organization, never mind.
No, I, I cannot, so I, I don't know.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I say this each year, is that I believe that the work of this committee is really challenging, uh, 'cause you never know who's going to apply, so every year you got a different set of applicants and asking for different things, and so it's always new, and it's gotta be, I know it's a lot of work and time-consuming, but my impression is, uh, having observed this process for a few years, is that it's really become nicely fine-tuned. Uh, the, the, the decision-making process, I guess it's a little bit of a black box, which I don't really need to know too much about. Uh, that's just as well, that's why we delegate it. Uh, but it seems like it's coming along, and, uh, and so I wanna applaud the, the committee for their time and commitment to it. Uh, a question that I have, do the organizations, we've got this, uh, chart, obviously, you're not the, the deciders as to what, you know, these people, these grants can actually get made, that's our decision, but are they aware of the status of their, of their possible funding at, to this point, or how, can I say it another way? How much, to what degree are they aware of this, of the possibility of their getting?
All of our minutes and recommendations, they're, they're all available. Uh, our meetings are open to the public, or, we send them an email that say we're recommending to the council, okay?
Say that again.
So, we, we send an email that we are making these recommendations to the council.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And this information is posted, obviously, as part of the...
Okay. I just don't know how timely that information is sent out. I, I know we had our meeting, but I don't know exactly when those...
By the way, we're not letting any cats out of the bag here, tonight.
No, it's been posted as all our materials for meetings, like...
Well, okay, then, I'm curious, because Educare is one I'm curious about, not because it happens to be physically located in my ward, but it's some, it's an organization that we have, uh, provided funds to for a number of years, so I'm wondering, uh, how it, how it happened that that particular one was considered to be ineligible.
I can look back specifically at why it was deemed ineligible, but I would have to get back to you on that unless... There you go, Sarah knows the answer.
Um, Educare was notified, as well as the others, uh, projects that were, um, determined to be ineligible within days of the, um, committee making that rec, our decision. Um, Educare specifically was determined to be ineligible because the focus of the Community Grants Program at this point in time is on arts and STEM-related projects, whereas their proposal was on, um, the food pantry, that hurts.
I see, okay.
Uh, just as an aside, Educare is getting, uh, some community development block grant funds for the food pantry this coming year.
Do we know how much? Sarah, do you know how much, do you know how much Educare is getting, community development block grants?
Roughly five thousand dollars, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it would, in the future, it would be helpful for, for that kind of information to be, to be imparted along with this, so that, you know, it's, it's clear as that why somebody's not getting one.
And we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just, it's, it's very helpful to understand, for us to understand that, because if we don't, then we're sitting here wondering and itching to ask in any case.
Just for, ooh, sorry, um, just for information, uh, the project below that, the Let's Play America, that was determined to be ineligible because it was not a project specific, it was general operating funds for the organization as a whole, and did not qualify, and then Man Up submitted a very similar proposal for, to that, that they're already getting funding for.
I see, okay.
I, I do have to say, uh, you, thank you for your, your compliments, all of your compliments to the committee, but we could not do our jobs if it weren't for the facilitation by Sarah and now Ashley. Uh, they do a ton of work to get us ready, give us all the information we need to make recommendations, so I, I cannot, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention them specifically and all the help that they give us.
Well, good, I'm glad, thank you for saying that. I have one last question, and that is, is there ever a situation in your experience where you get an application and you realize there is such a valuable situation that needs to be attended to, that it needs to be able to get more money than we're, than, than can be possibly handled in something like this?
We could, uh, recommend to the council that, uh, emergency, there's an emergency fund, if there's something like basic services, uh, something like that. I, I know the emergency fund is, is, not sacrosanct, but it, that money is for emergencies. I understand it's, it's for basic services and such, so if, if that were something we felt as, as a committee, this project has to be, it just absolutely has to be funded, we would, we would plead with the, to the, to the council that they might look for a direct disbursement, or the emergency fund, or something like that. Um, we would also, uh, give that organization feedback on where to go, a, a really good match for that project, or just general operating needs if they're, if that project really needs to get funded.
That's excellent to hear, because you, you're, you have this exposure to these organizations that I lack, and I, I'm not gonna know about this, but you're in a marvelous position to, to sort of have these antenna out there to pick up on these signals of where help is really needed.
We could always get bigger antenna though.
Thank you. Councilmember McCrory?
Yeah, one last question, which I forgot to ask before. Earlier in the year, when your committee was before us, there was some discussion about what happens occasionally when the application is missing something, and would they just be rejected or sent back to give another chance, and I think the discussion centered around the latter. Did that happen at all in this case? Were there any...
No, there were no, no Ts not crossed or Is not dotted that made an applica, an application ineligible, or that we just didn't find it, no.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Great, well, thank you very much, and thank you to the whole committee. Um, it seems like the process is, went well this year.
Yes, it did, it did.
And great, and we look for other feedback, um, in terms of process or policies or other things that if we could help clarify or give better direction, just let us know, and, um, we'll be voting on this in two weeks, correct, I think?
Look forward to seeing the results.
Yep.
Thanks.
Perfect, thank you so much, and I think we're losing councilmember mail.
Yeah, my apologies to the public, I'm gonna echo, I'm really tired.
Yeah.
Enjoy the debate.
Or go to bed.
Hopefully some good hot tea and, and hopefully I didn't catch it.
All right, we have one more item tonight, is the discussion of the Community Partnership Liaison, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that I take very seriously as part of my job is to identify when there may be opportunities to make changes in how we provide services, how much staff, um, is needed for a particular activity, that kind of thing. Um, one of the, our areas that has changed over time is how does the city help, um, leverage partners to provide services that are needed by our residents, and we had started, uh, about two years ago with the idea of a half-time lifelong Tacoma program, um, and, uh, some wonderful work was done in terms of, um, identifying partners for seniors and persons with disabilities. Um, at the time, there were some kind of nascent organizations, such as The Village, um, that were, um, just starting to learn what they could do, and, um, and so that got going. One of the things that came out of that, which I think is, is particularly neat, is that we have, um, really organized seniors now who speak for themselves about the kinds of needs that they, uh, have, and, and they help each other, and, um, that's a voice that we really didn't hear before, and so it's a wonderful part of, uh, our community. Um, however, the, the position of the lifelong Tacoma, uh, program has kind of changed a little bit because of, because of the changes over time, and partners, um, ends up being a large, developing partnerships ends up being a, a larger part of that role. But at the same time, the council and the last budget, and through the, um, Community Conversation on Youth Success, identified other areas of our community that could benefit from partnerships, and, um, I think we have an opportunity at this point, and, and because there was some interest in knowing that we, the council might wanna do something with that, a half-time position was allocated in the budget, but, but kind of to be defined, uh, and to see if it was needed. At, at this point, I think it is needed, and I, um, am proposing to take, um, the half FTE from the lifelong Tacoma, um, program and the half, um, FTE that was kind of identified for youth and others, um, creating a full-time position that would really identify and leverage partners in, from agencies, nonprofits, the faith community, um, so that we're much bigger than our small staff, that, in terms of providing services to the community, identifying what's needed, identifying the strengths of the different partners, so that they can complement each other, and, um, as I've been kind of trying this out and thinking about it, I really do feel it's a good fit at this point. I'd like the council's support in, kind of, changing that into a full-time position that's a partnership, uh, structured position, um, and I'd like to move forward with it if there's support from the council.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I support your idea. Uh, I think this is more than needed in the city. Couple questions. One, who would the position report to? Are they a direct report to you, or would they report to Mr. Dan Weber? And two, um, when we put out for this position on the street, I would hope that the responsibilities would be fifty-fifty for, uh, seniors and youth, and then within there, persons with disabilities.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if I might, I, I mean, I, I actually...
I'm trying to cover everybody.
Yes, we can do it.
That's right, I don't want anyone to say, he forgot about my people.
I, I haven't thought through exactly who it reports to, um, and I haven't thought through every, um, kind of qualification for the position, that's part of why I've been talking to each of you and to some of my, and to some of my staff, um, to find, to kind of crystallize that. Uh, there are people besides young people and seniors, um, there's, there's other people that we've, um, been particularly concerned about, people with developmental disabilities, um, sometimes, uh, persons that have mental issues that we need to work with, so there's a recognition that kind of in the social service category that we don't, it's not our job to provide social services, nevertheless, there's many people that...
Desperately need.
That need to have those packages come together for them, and the way that we can leverage that, I think, is important. So, I, I haven't finalized all that, I wanted to make sure that I had something to play with here.
So, in the first iteration, I support it.
Any other questions or comments from the city manager? Councilmember Schultz?
What?
I knew it was coming.
Can't wait till we get our new mics.
Yeah.
When are they coming?
Well, you have, still, there's on your, there's a resident ordinance coming up, yeah.
Can't do anything without talking.
Rizzi's supposed to turn on my speaker.
I know.
He's just not doing his job.
He's your partner.
I, I, I support this, uh, proposal. I'm, because I just think that this, our, our policy, which we, we have previously established is, is in fact, to try to identify partners, so, and I'm just repeating this for the benefit of the public, that we're not reinventing the wheel, that, uh, we can build and facilitate the work that others have already started. And a classic example of that is, is Man Up, another classic example of that is, is The Village, um, that over the last couple of years has matured...
That's right.
To the point where it's almost, just sort of can take care of its, itself, and knows how to go about getting the monies that, that it needs to do things. So I think this is a, an excellent policy approach, and, and it just seems to fit that we have a person on staff who has the flexibility. Uh, I, I'm not sure I would want to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Smith, that it needs to be, uh, you know, precision in terms of fifty-fifty, you know, and fifty, or whatever you wanna slice it up, I just think these are, there's opportunities that will come up, uh, and, and there's levels of need. If you have a, like a nascent organization, a lot of time might be required to, to, you know, kind of nurture that one along. If you have a more mature entity, uh, maybe a lot less time might be needed to, to be, to be devoted to it, but at least we'll have a, a, a single person here in the city that can kind of almost act, you know, as this nexus for bringing services to the, to the people that, that, that need it. So that's, that's why I think it's an interesting idea.
Councilmember McCreshy?
I just wanted to also reiterate that I support this. I, it's interesting, aside from the pothole requests and when is the park on Sligo Mill ever gonna go up, which I will ask again, um, I think the majority of the inquiries that I get from people in the community are the elderly or other individuals who need services, and the email immediately goes to Mr. Dan Weber and Ms. Ludlow, and then they have to, amongst their many other responsibilities, scramble to identify that partnership organization, which we know we have, and who in the city staff knows what that organization is, to then trickle down and then get word to this individual later than we would like sometimes, because that's the nature of how busy everybody is. So, I, I think this is an excellent idea of creating a bridge between our city government and other partnership organizations, and having one point of contact for various individuals and, uh, folks who have certain needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, and I'll just end this evening by saying, um, thank you very much to our city manager. I think this shows a great deal of, um, flexibility, and even though I hate this word, forward-thinking, that's exactly what you're doing, um, and it is a, really a holistic approach to our council priorities, as we have listed here on our agenda item. This is really moving forward to make sure we have a livable community for all. It's about fiscally sustainable government, engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government, and I just wanna, um, thank you with everything that your plate is always very full, to, uh, really step back and think strategically about how we can improve our services here for our residents. So, I very much support this and look forward to hearing more about it. And I think with that, we are done for the evening. Um, reminder, you're, you will be at the Dog Pack tomorrow morning, or where...
I will, before going to, uh, before going to another discussion about...
Did I hear a dog park?
Yes, unfortunately, I have, I already have another eight AM meeting, so I will not be there, um, but it's very exciting to have...
It's wonderful that's happened, so, wonderful, all right, good night, everyone. We're done.